Wait for a few more minutes before we start our meeting, so we'll get going in a few minutes. Secretary, are we good to go?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Is that Julie?
Yes.
Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so here we are at our planning board meeting for April 15th. Our agenda, we have a couple of pieces of business to attend to, the first being the commercial development application for the patient submitted by Sean Grant doing businesses bright side Marina. And I also want to check, do we have our CEO with us tonight? Gary, are you with us tonight?
He's logging on right now.
Okay.
There he is.
All right, good. I didn't want to get going without him. I just want to make this Gary, Gary. All right, we're just getting started, so. Okay, so to bring everybody to where we are now, a quick recap and Anthony or Michael, please jump in if I overlook some aspect of where we are. So what we have done so far is to have a period to examine the application for completeness that had been done, determined, complete. We then moved on to a phase where we heard information from Butters. We also dove into interest in the application itself. Or some very specific things that we examined and then asked for more information. We've gone through those things, then went through a lengthy findings of fact. Period. And those items were captured and sent a document that's before us now. Would want to make sure the planning board members all have the package that was sent or made available. So George, yes.
Yes.
Rich, you have that?
I received it. One thing I'd point out for me is that usually I use my wife's tablet to, I mean, computer to access the documents in my tablet to participate in the meeting, but she's got a meeting tonight too, so as we go along, I may not have access to every piece of paper I need. I should have any.
Okay, thanks. And Craig, are you good with that document? Okay, great. Um, so at this point, I guess I would want to make sure I checked with the board members first, and if you have anything left to add, having gone through those things, we're at a point where gone through the findings of fact. Is there anything else that this board sees? We would want to pause for more conversation about before moving ahead, make sure we address this carefully. So George, yes.
I actually have a procedural question from Mike, if I may. This is the appropriate time. So Mike, as prior to every one of our meetings, there's always a lot of emails flying around. Just preceding them and and there was it raised the procedural question in my mind. The record is closed at this point. But I'm wondering what the board's options are if there's information being provided that indicates two of our findings of fact are in fact inaccurate. And the site plan is inaccurate. And the conditions that are based on those findings in fact are ineffectual. If this is all presuming the information's correct. Do we have any option to us to somehow table this matter and to investigate the veracity of that information? Or do we have, or if it is true, the, and we have no option but to proceed with, for lack of a better term, a document that's somewhat of work of fiction. The, it becomes an enforcement matter.
So in terms of emails that have come in after the record and that sort of thing, the records closed. And there was a hearing and there's been argument. I know there's an issue that was discussed procedurally with respect to the interpretation of some of the record information that came in right before the last meeting. April 1st, which would have been, which you were relying on. So to the extent that information was in the record and there's something misstated. And I actually had just one or one or two notes on things when I redrafted the findings that we could talk about. But if there was something that's inaccurate in the, in the findings that we've proposed, that you wanted to go back and reconsider, we haven't voted, you haven't voted on the, on the entire findings yet, the final decision. So you could go back and reconsider based on what was in the record as of April 1, when you were voting on it. And that would be somebody who voted in favor would have to move to reconsider, get a second, and then go back into a discussion of whether something needs to be changed. But in terms of public comment after the public hearing, that's, you know, and I'm not sure I wasn't there. I'm not sure how much of it is restating the same stuff, but anything that came up afterwards, I would say is not part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
So, so that's a great question about the procedural part. And Michael, thank you for that information. So, so George, are there, are there parts we would want to consider then that we could possibly go back to and?
No, not at this point. I think I just soon wait to see what Michael has to suggest in the way of possible changes based on some of the information that did come in prior to the record closing.
Yeah, and Peter, you want me to shoot on that? Mine are fairly minor.
Yep, please, that would be good, very good.
And just real briefly too, just so folks know, so I took the findings that were in draft, that George had prepared beforehand. And basically copied those, as you can see into this document. One thing I would point out is that George's document had included what was in the record. And that wasn't discussed at length at the last meeting, but that's on page one and two. And I'm assuming that was reviewed, nobody had any objections. And then I added to that, the email of April 1, 2021, that was submitted that morning, which was obviously discussed at length on the first that evening. So that was part of the record. Other than that, I did not add much other than in one place I added a second sentence on the part of the ordinance that refers to noise. Because that was discussed, it wasn't in the findings. But again, it's just quoting from the actual ordinance, so it had been discussed and I thought adding it made sense. At that point, it's not, I guess I'd say controversial or controverted, it's literally a quote right out of the ordinance. One thing that was brought to my attention that I had forgotten about, so this is new and substantive tonight. And I wouldn't say it's a reconsideration, but a clarification, at least would be my take on the project specific conditions. And again, those, so they start on page 15 at the bottom, and I'm going to be talking about on page 16. Those again were, were the conditions that in large part George read from on the first. He sent the written document to me. I then added, oh, I added G, which is on parking, which I had to try to take from the record by going back. I had to get a little bit of help from the record on E, the wildlife habitat. But the one I wanted to raise was D at the very bottom of page 16. I would, it came to my attention afterwards that there was a discussion of where the boats would be stored. And discussion that the grants' personal boats would not be included in sort of this, where those would be stored, the restrictions. So I would make a couple of minor tweaks to that condition. So that it refers only to the commercial or the, the customer boats for storage. And at this point, what I'd suggest is that we add two words. After the word all, add the word customer. And then at the end of the first line, right before tours, add the word commercial. So the way it would read is that all customer boats and trailers awaiting restoration, repair, sale, rental, or to be used for commercial tours would be stored in these areas, just to distinguish between the grants' personal boats that were discussed during the meeting on the first. So that would be one minor adjustment in the findings.
So thank you, Michael, for that. So procedurally then, that would be a minor edit to D. Would want, if the board is prepared to do so, or when the board is prepared to do so, I think we'd want to have a motion to, I guess reconsider, is that the right term?
And those I would not say need to be reconsidered. I think you just need to make a motion to, to change those because I don't think it changes the intent of it at all.
I see the distinction. So it's simply an edit. Okay, so yeah, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but are there relative to D, were there any other edits that we need to be prepared for? None other from Michael, right? Any other planning board members? Anything on D, George?
Actually, this isn't specific to D, it's a procedural thing. I'm pretty sure Sarah knows this, but Sarah, because she hasn't been involved in the process to date, is unable to vote.
Right. Yeah, thank you for that clarification, right? Sarah had future ones, you'd be able to, but because this one had preceded your involvement and that would not include you as a voting member tonight on this particular case.
I'm okay.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. Okay. Um, so procedurally, we know who can vote tonight on this matter. Relative to D, are we prepared to edit D? Looking at the board members, trying to get clarification on this. So if so, I would entertain a motion to edit D as suggested by, by Michael Hodgins.
I make a motion to edit D as suggested by Mike.
Thank you, Craig. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Rich. Any more discussion on that? So all those in favor, so, so George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I would be in favor, so that is four in favor, none opposed. And so we'll edit that as suggested by Michael. Thank you very much. George, you want to get back to some other items that we were talking about earlier? So are there items that we need to get to tonight? Outside of the suggested edit that was part of this record that's basically fair game?
In terms of addressing items that are already on the public record, I have one item for the board's consideration. And that has, has to do with the reconsideration of the condition B4 with regard to revegetation. We changed, the numbers changed at the last minute. But you may recall to, in response to Jeff Allen's recommendation that another thirty, well, 3160 square feet be revegetated to meet the phosphorus export standard. That is reflected in the total number of 4360 square feet. But what we don't have is we don't know where that parcel, where that land is that's going to be revegetated. And so the question becomes, should we require as a condition the location of that on the site plan, much as this 1,200 square feet is already on the site plan? Otherwise, it could be anywhere.
I think that's a fair question. Mr. Allen, you were involved in this. What do you, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, that was determined that the day of the hearing, so I did not have a, an area in mind for that. I guess I would, would work with the grants to find an appropriate area to revegetate that would not impede where they propose to use land for other purposes.
Thank you, Jeff.
And that was discussed at the last meeting.
Thank you. Planning board members, George?
In Jeff Allen's memo to the board that accompanied his revised phosphorus export calculations, it was indicated that the intent of this revegetation was twofold, not just the phosphorus, but to provide screening along Red Oak Lodge. And, and so the location becomes important if it's going to accomplish both of those objectives.
So Jeff, is that, and Samantha, is that something that can indicate that would be in line with what was stated last time about?
Yeah.
Machine objectives.
I think we talked about the areas that would need to be revegetated are along Red Oak Lodge. The other areas are vegetated, so I mean, there would be no sense in us vegetating areas that aren't, that are already vegetated, so. It's really a no brainer.
Right. So I'm thinking what we're trying to get at is, can we indicate that? George, tell me if I'm going down the wrong path. Indicate that on the map is a possibility.
That's what, that was my thought, and it would just be a matter of adding something to that existing condition of approval, a sentence.
I'm muted. Sorry to jump in, Peter, but yeah, so, so George, you're basically suggesting in B4, add something to clarify, I think the way it reads right now is it says, shown in the site plan shall be completed by October 1st. You're suggesting add something to specify where in the site plan that should be.
Correct.
Give us a little more direction to the, to the applicant.
Okay. So procedurally, then, if, if that's something we might be looking for, and it sounds like the applicants are very willing to, to do that part, indicate that that way. We will need to have a slight adjustment on number four, is that right?
I think it'd be a motion to reconsider the language in project condition B4.
So before we go there, so are the applicants, you understand what we're asking for, right? And it sounded like you're in agreement.
It, it sounds to me, what Jeff, what I recall Jeff explaining is there's already an area that was slated for revegetation in Red Oak Lodge. And my understand, my recollection of the meeting was that he indicated that we would expand the area that was already there, which is, which is basically where the logging truck went in and out with those dirt.
Okay, thanks.
And, and so I think it would be easy to add language clarifying that the, the bare area along Red Oak Lodge.
Okay, thank you. And so for the planning board members, does this make sense then going this, down this path? George, you satisfied? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Rich, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Craig? Makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm seeing a lot of agreement on this, so I would entertain a motion to reconsider B4, the language for B4.
I'll make a motion to reconsider condition B4.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And seconded, thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. So George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so that's four in favor, none opposed. So that will be revised. Okay. Procedurally, what else? Fair game, there's still part of the record. Is there anything else that we need to adjust?
Should we come up with specific language at this point?
Oh, for, for for your stand?
Yeah, my, my suggestion would be probably, probably to deal with B4 now, get it, see if you can get the language so I can amend it and then move forward with anything else.
Okay, thank you, yeah. The specific language. Saw pencils flying when we were talking, so.
I don't know if Mike wants me to take a crack at it, or if he's got language wind up.
I think you can, you understand the, the drawing better than I am. I'm actually trying to look at the reduced size of the drawing. I don't know if you want to be specific as to where within that area. I'm trying to follow it. I see an area which was, as you said, the logging road, which is 1,200 square feet. Is there a way that you want to describe it so the rest of the 3160 will occur? You know, it, to the north of that, for example, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where you're looking for the screening, but if you could be that specific, I think that would probably help.
Well, we could go that route. I guess another route that I was thinking of and based on what Mr. Allen just mentioned, that they really hadn't had identified a specific area yet would be to ask that that portion of the site plan be revised and submitted showing that that area that it is to be revegetated, so that a condition would read, that rewording that condition would be something like revegetation with grass and trees of the 4360 square feet areas, Bear Storey will shall be completed by October 1st, 2021, eliminating the rest of that language, and then add to that the location to be revegetated along Red Oaks Lodge Road shall be shown on a revised site plan and submitted to the planning board by June 1st, 2021.
George, are you proposing that that hold up the vote on this, or this be approved secondary to the, to the board?
I'm not proposing holding up anything. I'm, I'm suggesting that we just amend this condition and that drawing then would be submitted after, after our, our vote and after a final decision.
Right.
I just would hate to hold it up. I'd rather grind through.
No, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Right.
So George, just so, I'm going to try to clarify what you're proposing. So the, the existing language that I've sent to you from last time was basically one sentence, B4.
Right.
You're suggesting adding that the location of the 3160 square feet to be revegetated along Red Oaks Lodge Road will be shown on a revised plan and then submitted by June 1.
So yeah, maybe for simplicity, use the total number. The 43
Okay.
60 square feet.
And so the change though is essentially just to have it shown on the plan and submitted before June 1, it's almost two months from now.
Correct.
So that then there's something on the plan, which we can go back to later for enforcement or whatever.
For verification purposes, and that would also give the grants and Jeff Allen an opportunity to think about exactly where they want to do this along Red Oak Lodge.
I think there's limited areas that don't already have trees, so it's probably going to be the cleared area.
So Peter, does that make sense to everybody else?
It, it does to me, and it seemed like it was an acceptable path forward also to the applicants. Is that the case, Jeff, Samantha, is that? See where we're going?
I'm happy with that. If we revised the plan earlier, would that, could that be approved earlier so we could get planting? I just want to allow maximum opportunity for vegetative growth as early as possible. So how do we short circuit that so we can get approval of the revised area? Perhaps of before June 1st or the June, first June planning board meeting?
Well, Mr. Chair, could I, could I jump in? If I might.
Briefly, yes.
Thank you. I, as I understand it, the the, the subject of the rest of this being okay, the application is going to be approved tonight. And the, the specific location isn't being submitted for approval, it's being submitted for purposes of showing where it is and further enforcement opportunities.
Correct.
That's how, yep, that's how I understood it.
Correct. Okay, so planning board, we have suggested language to add that other sentence as George and Michael have, have both contributed to this. I would entertain a motion, I guess, to add that, add that language at this point for E4, should be for clarification.
Do you want me to restate it just so somebody can then make the motion? Would that help?
Yes.
Because I've got it, I've got it written. It would add a second sentence to B4, which says, "The location of the 4,360 square feet to be revegetated along Red Oaks Lodge Road shall be shown on a revised site plan and submitted to the planning board by June 1, 2021." Does that seem right?
It does.
Can you clarify that it's not for approval, it's for the record, as we just said?
Just, yeah, it's just submitted.
It doesn't have to come back to the planning board for approval?
Right.
Okay.
Just for the file. So that reading, maybe somebody can make the motion.
Yep.
Do we have to make a motion that essentially repeats you, or can I say, make a motion to amend as provided in the language that Michael Hodgson provided the board?
That works, I think.
That would work. So we have a motion?
That was a motion.
Yeah, and I need a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
I'm in favor, so that's four in favor, none opposed. Um, were there any other items that are are of consideration within this findings of fact document? What I'm looking to do is, if there are things that fair game that are part of the record, right, that should be clarified or something, that we tackle that now? And then at some point, we get to a point where we're either going to approve or not approve this, this application. George?
Here, my memory is kind of failing me here, and I just wanted to get the other board members Here, my memory is kind of failing me here, and I I just wanted to get the other board members. Thoughts on this finding, it's pre K on page eight. And we discussed it at length, and I I. Recall, it it has to do with whether marine oil based paints can be just. Brought to the transfer station for disposal or recycling, and I thought we concluded that it could not. Because it's considered a hazardous waste by D E P and. And and in fact, I I did get the wrong end of the stick when I read the website, town website. It specifically allows. Home oil bit house. Oil based paint to go there for recycling because it goes through that program. Paint smart, but. It's only limited to architectural. Architectural paints and not marine paints are not part of that program, therefore the transfer station can't accept it. So I thought I changed that.
I thought Michael said that we couldn't dictate. What the town's policy was. As far as disposing at the town transfer station, we can't dictate what they take. That's what I thought. That was the understanding that I thought we got to it. Is that right, Michael?
Well, in I think Peter, I think George is saying something a little different, which is that the. The understanding of what's permitted at the town landfill may have may have changed his understanding. At the end of the day, frankly, I don't think it really makes a difference. Because the question isn't what the transfer station allows, it's just whether the applicant is disposing of of the paint.
We we've gone over this a number of times, but we do have a dumpster service, the paint that we are disposing for our the things that we're disposing as empty cans, we don't throw away. Paint, so you might have a trace of paint, but we're not disposing of. Volumes of paint, it would be trace amounts, you know, some of these things again are three hundred dollars a quart. And we don't use the town of Belgrade landfill.
So in in one suggestion. Just based on what George is saying, might not even require a vote, is to delete that last sentence, George, in K. Just so we're not in conflict with the finding in terms of what is or is not allowed at the at the transfer station.
Yeah, that would make it accurate.
So we do use, just to be clear, we don't use the transfer station, we use an orange walk facility.
Thank you.
Okay.
I like complete. You know, I like that idea. I like the idea of deleting that last sentence.
Yeah, best to be accurate. And I'm just gonna say, I don't I don't think it even really requires a motion because it's not. It it's it doesn't change, I I think, the intent. It's simply a statement of what's allowed at the transfer station, so I don't think we have to go through the the motion process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that advice. Okay. Were there anything? Any other items in here that were? I'm going to say again, fair game. Where it's needed.
Sorry, Peter, I flagged one other thing, which is going to be so small, you're going to wonder why I raised it. In M. You know, I I had recorded the vote for everyone trying to be complete. In Mem M, I forgot to put five five to zero. I just want to point out that I'm going to add that in in the final draft.
Oh. Oh, good. Thank you very much.
Like I said, it probably I could have snuck it in, nobody would have. Noticed or objected, but I'm gonna, I will add that in. Again, I don't think it needs a vote, it's a record of the vote, so.
If we're if we're nitpicking, I would just also add, sorry, Mike, there's a small thing in the findings of fact. Where we said we're applying for a green marina boatyard certification, but I think what I said was that when we started the process and the state discontinued that program. But if it was recontinued, we'd pursue it.
Thank you. Are there any other items that we need to review at this time? George?
I just wanted to ask Mike if he found that typo where will and will not. I'm trying to find it real quick myself, but. Both, oh, it's a three D.
May have been trouble, let me look to see my draft, three D.
Yeah, three D. It it should read will not have an adverb effect, and will is still in there.
Yes, thank you. Yep, again. Trying to modify, yep.
Okay, um, are there any other items in this that we need to to? Review? Anybody have anything else? Okay, so hearing none, I want to get back to some of the original comments that concerns George, you brought up the procedural things have do. Based on what we brought up at the beginning of this, we're asking Michael for advice, knowing that. You know, there were things that are fair game and things that are not for discussion. And you had talked about if we've received something that might be. Have a bearing on on this particular document, have we? Satisfied your questions, I guess, and?
No, Mike, Michael answered quite precisely. We cannot consider that. Information because it was not presented on the record, public record.
Right? So, um. So that leaves us, I think, at a point where if there's that stuff is off the table and what is in front of us is com. Has been completed, and we've since reconsidered a few items for clarity sake. Is there anything left to do? Other than both on this? I'm not aware of anything, but I want to make sure we're being very clear on this. It's time. Seeing I'm not seeing anybody that says, yes, we have more things to discuss. So at this point, I would entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve the application. With the various amendments that are part of the findings of fact. I don't know if that's suitable or not, but that. My motion.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much, Rich. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Craig will second it. I defer to Craig.
Craig seconds, thank you. Any more discussion on this? No, okay. Before we say anything more, I want to, first of all, recognize the the amount of effort, time, money. Put into this entire effort by the applicants, the extraordinary efforts put in by the planning boards to try and get us to this point. The time and energy put in by your butters who have submitted information to us, as we've heard you. I want to just make sure to thank everybody for doing that. Mr. Cates, thank you for your input on this. And Mr. Hudgens, thank you for all your assistance. We appreciate it greatly. It's it's a complicated thing. It's it's hard, so. And we don't do this for a living. This is. We're trying to do this correctly. All right. Got a motion, seconded, no more discussion. All those in favor, do a roll call. So so Sarah, as discussed, you won't be eligible for this vote. But going on other things, you will be able to. George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Now vote in favor, yes. So it's four in favor, none opposed, passes. So. This goes now to Gary, we submit that to you, is that correct? We tell you that it's approved?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so that's our process, and that's what we'll be doing, and. There are the condition, the applicants to be aware of that you that we've discussed, and I know you've seen, so we're expecting those to be held, so.
Peter?
Finish point, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, you're you're breaking up, I thought you were done. In terms of the mechanics, I will make those few minor revisions. I mean, the good thing about having minor revisions tonight is they're pretty clear. And so mechanically, I will, I will get this document to you to sign for the planning board. So that's that's the last step.
Okay.
Finalize of tonight's vote.
All right, great, thank you. And that is all for. That first agenda item.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, so for the planning board members and any other person that would like to stick around. Item is the review of the town's sub. With K V cog planner, Charles. Charles, we welcome you again, and thank you. All your work that you've done with us, we really appreciate that.
Too bad everyone's leaving, this is the most exciting part.
The stage is yours, my friend, have it.
All right, great, so thank you for having me again. So I just wanted to kind of talk about, I sent over a draft. On April eighth, so the document that we'll be working off right now is a Belgrade subdivision four dot eight. And in that draft, what I did was make all the. Technical changes of that or the procedural changes to the subdivision ordinance. Mainly including the major, minor and major subdivision. Designation of kind of building it in through the entire process. So I'll just highlight the big changes to that. I don't imagine going through this line by line because it's ninety one pages. If you want to, I'd I'd be down, but. I think the best way is just to all highlight the changes, and then I know George brought up one point as well. As well, and Sarah, hi, nice to meet you. If you have any questions along the way, please stop me. We've been working on this, we've seen a few drafts of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions or clarifications, so. I just want to say, so I'll start off. I added two new articles and made changes to Article Five, which is a sketch plan and sketch plan meeting and onsite inspection. Where I added the definition of the minor and major. To the. What we had discussed at last meeting, so that's an Article Five, I added Article. Or I changed Articles six, seven, eight, and nine. To separate the minor subdivision and the major subdivision, giving them a preliminary plan and a final plan. They are not. They are not the same chapters, they have subtle differences. And we'll go through those tonight. And then George, to the point you will talk about, which is the sufficient water in Article ten. Might be in a different article now. No, it's still Article, it's Article ten, correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
Because I did add two more articles, but I think that's fine. I don't know if it was in performance and design standards or performance guarantees either way. That I know where that section is, I think it was ten point two. But now it might be twelve point two, so we'll just double check that and.
All right.
So I'm going to go to.
Yeah, you're right, according to your outline.
Yeah, and and that all temporary, but I I know I knew what you were talking about because we had spent some time there.
Just ask question. What what day was this email sent out? I mean, I've read it, but to find it again. When was this sent out?
I for I sent it to Peter and Anthony, and I think Peter sent it to the board, correct?
No one has a date on their emails.
No, I can I can share a screen as well. If that'll help.
That'd be helpful, I don't have that email either.
Oh.
Hang on.
To find it.
I believe it was in the packet. For the board at the very end.
Yeah.
That fired so long. And then Anthony sent it to us. Prior to that, in a separate email, when he first got it from Charles. So that we get it, it might have been last Thursday, possibly.
That would have been. Seventh, no, eighth. Eighth.
It'd be sometime af- after the eighth would be my guess, but I just sent it to Peter.
The copy I got was from Anthony. I I specifically remember and looked at that today.
I rejected what I said, I actually got it, and unfortunately, it was one of the was the only email I didn't read out of the. Ten that Anthony sent to me. So my apologies.
No worries. Yeah, so I'm also going to share my screen. I don't know if Julie is here, if I could get the ability to share.
I'm not sure how to do that, I'm not that familiar with it, maybe Anthony will know how to do that.
He's. You can just, if you make me a host, if you feel comfortable, I'm not going to do anything.
Yeah, let me, let me do that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to briefly make you a host, Charles, so hold on.
Yeah, I won't do anything crazy, if not, you can tell Joel. Perfect. And in that document, I did highlight the places where I made. Change it like subtle changes.
Yes.
So I still can't.
Give me just a sec, Charles.
Yeah, yeah, no worries.
I gotta figure out how to make, how to undo Julie as a host. So Julie, I'm going to, I'm going to put you in the waiting room just briefly, and then and then I'll bring you back out.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it might Julie's a host and you're the co-host, Anthony, so I think if Julie just right clicks my name in the participant section, she can make me a co-host.
Yeah, the only way I can do it is Julie is if you leave the meeting.
If she's recording, then she can't. So it's okay, we we can kind of work around it.
No, 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 here, listen, so so I'm going to leave the meeting, and then Charles, if you will, you will talk Julie through making you the the co-host, okay?
Oh, I can share now, so everything's good.
Yes, that's cool. I just changed you to co-host next to your name.
Yep.
Great, let me find the right document.
And while you're doing that, I want to just reassure Anthony that you can stay. You don't have to go.
All right, so I'm here, this is the word document, and this is Article Five, so this is the the state statute at most requires a three step process. So a sketch plan. And a final submission, or you can have a sketch plan preliminary and a final plan. So the way I've kept, I've maintained the preliminary plan for both. So here is the. I thought the best place to decide where when it is a minor or major subdivision would be when applying for the sketch plan meeting. I've seen some towns, I think Vasselboro was the other town I was looking at in the region. Where they just have that straight as the app, right in the application, so that it goes to the. CEO or town manager, whoever handles the applications. But I thought that if it went to the sketch plan meeting, they can have a conversation about. Everything that goes on here, and I thought the minor and major subdivision for the preliminary and final applications would be, I think, would work and. The minor subdivisions, we had discussed this last time, only residential. No more than three additional lots or dwelling units, leading to a total of four lots, just wanted to clarify that, no new roads, and we said no larger than two hundred thousand square feet.
Yeah, I like that approach that you took, Charles, of putting it in into the sketch plan preliminary step.
Yeah, and the only thing that. I considered. I considered adding, I had it in one of my original drafts, is saying that. Uh, some language where you can may, if they, if they come in, if an applicant comes in and says, hey, this is a minor subdivision, you can only treat it as a minor subdivision. Uh, if there is a situation where you might want to make that a different subdivision. Um, but I think that's addressed later on, if that concern makes sense. Um, that this is a very. If they'll be limited to it, so it's not. I'm trying to find the best way to explain it, but. If the application fits this, it will be a minor subdivision, no matter what, is what I'm saying. Um, so this is kind of, and and that's fine, I think that's the intent of it, and I can't really envision a situation where. Someone will come in and it shouldn't be a minor subdivision, but it checks all the marks. Um, but residential, no more than three, four, so this is what we agreed upon last time, I think this kind of fits well into the grand scheme of it.
So if it's uh, comes in as a minor subdivision and five, seven, eight years down the road. They wanna go into a complete subdivision, they're able to do that correctly.
Correct? Yeah, because it's after five years.
So it takes five years?
Yeah. Well, the time has nothing to do with it. If they wanted, if they wanted to do a minor subdivision. Again, oh, I see what you're saying, there's no.
Yeah, so if they wanted to do a minor subdivision because they had road frontage and stuff. Uh, and then maybe a few years down the road, they decided they wanted to do a complete subdivision.
Right.
They're able to do this?
Yeah, I mean, I think for. We can do, add no more than three additional lots for dwelling units and within a five-year period, that's kind of similar to the state statute. Unless that's not what you're asking, I, there's no time limit for minor subdivisions.
Right, but if they decide to expand further, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, they.
No, they can, so they get their minor. And then years down the road, they wanna. Three or four years or whatever, they complete their minor subdivision. And then they want to expand further with the road.
Yeah, then they could hypothetically another for. They can do another minor subdivision and add for three new lots.
Well, well, all right, well, that's not really what I was asking, but um. They could go, so they could do a minor after five years. Well, they can't because you have to add a road, so um. Is there? Anything stopping them to change their mind and coming back to the planning board for a full subdivision?
Um.
I, I don't think so, not the way this is drafted.
No, so Craig, just, I'm trying to understand it exactly to make sure I'm not, I don't misspeak, so you're saying.
So you have um, the old lady, an old man that has a. Bunch of land and they have road frontage, so they give it to their children. And that kicks in the minor subdivision.
Yeah.
But then a few years down the road. Uh, she dies and the children decide they want to put a subdivision in. What's, is, there's nothing stopping them from doing that, is there?
No. Nothing's stopping them, no.
Greg, did, did you say that? When the, the. Mother and father give it to the kids, uh, that they created a subdivision? Because.
Well.
They, they wouldn't, I don't think, because they're blood relatives or whatever.
Okay, so say if they sold it off, though. Sold three lots off.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they would have to do, they would, so the first minor subdivision would be no more than four lots. And that's, so then that's completed. Uh, and in that situation, so like a year after the minor subdivision, they want to. Do another four lots. Uh, that would be another minor subdivision.
If they had the road frontage.
Yeah, yeah.
The road frontage.
Yeah.
Then they would have to put a road in, that's what I'm asking, so that would kick it into a subdivision.
Yeah, and then there's also like the total area of subdivided lots, no larger than two hundred thousand square feet. But as, as long as there's, as long as it's residential. Um, no more than four total lots, no new roads, it'll be a minor subdivision. There's no time, there's no time period. It's not four within five years, it's just, is this, does it meet these requirements?
No, I'm, that's not what I'm asking. Um, I'm asking. Once that's complete, there's nothing stopping them from. Re- reapplying. And going further with a regular subdivision.
With a ma- there's, it's still a subdivision, a minor subdivision is still a subdivision, like to go from a minor to a major?
I'm, I'm thinking, what he's asking is, is it would be. If the conditions were that after they completed the minor, they wanted to, to do more. He, I think Craig called it a regular one, which is really with the road is gonna be a major, right?
Well, major subdivision is.
Right?
Well, there's no regular, there's a minor and there's a major, right?
Right, right, so they wouldn't be prohibited from doing that, it would, it would uh, seem like by what the conditions are, we've just talked about. It would not fit the minor subdivision path, it would be a, or definition, it'd be a major subdivision definition.
If they decided to change it, there's nothing stopping them from changing it.
Well, if they change it, they would just have to do a new application.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but there's no timeframe, there's nothing, just because it was a minor, doesn't mean they can't reapply.
Nope.
Right.
I mean, in, so in the process, I think there is a timeline, and there is a way where. Um, I'm just going, I'm trying to think of exactly where in the document is, but there is, there's a standard that kind of guarantee, or I think it might be a performance guarantee. That talks about the timeline project. So if they don't finish it in a certain timeline, they have to reapply, if they want to change direction, they would have to reapply. Especially if it changes it from a minor to a major. Um, because a minor is really low impact, there's not. Much development, and if they do need to add a new road. At a later date, then that's a separate subdivision.
So what's the timeline?
I forget off the top of my head, if that, if there's one exists, I can look for it.
Well, there shouldn't be, because I'm still working on my subdivision and there's nothing wrong with that.
Maybe there isn't, I'll make a note of that. Yeah, I don't want to zoom around, uh, but I'll make a note, I don't, I don't think there, um. In your situation, I don't, there is no limiting factor, if they want to do. Another, if they had a lot of road frontage and they want to do four more lots after, then they can do another minor subdivision.
Uh, so I'm also curious about a timeline, if there's a timeline.
I could have misspoke, I'll look into that.
Because that's really.
I don't, I think, I, I don't think I meant like that you have to complete the project within three or four years. Um, just if you are in the application process, you need to start at a certain point, I believe.
Well, that's fine, yes.
Hey. All right, so anymore, it does, it does this feel, um, the questions I had for this section is, does this seem like the appropriate place? Um, at the sketch plan meeting, or would you want to see at the sketch plan meeting, kind of the plan? Um, the reason why I think if they come in with a sketch plan, they say, oh, we're gonna add a road, you know it's a major. But if there's still some questions and you can kind of work with the applicant of making it a minor and major, and you can lay the next steps out.
I think this is good for the sketch plan, yeah.
I agree with Craig, I, I think this feels good at this stage. You know, try to think about like, the applicant coming in to work with. The planning board on this, this would be an important time to sort of help decide.
Mostly because um. Not every subdivision is gonna be engineered, you know, it's not gonna have. It's, it's gonna be a small, just regular people coming in to apply, so at the sketch plan meeting, they can figure out what's what.
Yeah.
And so I think this is good.
All right, so I'm gonna go down to the next section. Which is, so as I was saying before, there is a minor subdivision preliminary plan, a minor subdivision final plan. Uh, those are two separate articles, and then there are two articles. Uh, preliminary and final for a major subdivision. Let me try to expand this, so my notes are in here. So basically, very similar to what this was originally, not much has changed. All very stip- typical like stuff of giving a receipt of the application. This is one thing, uh, I had a small question for, for applications for minor subdivisions, do we want to have? A smaller fee per chance? Um, thinking about, I'm not sure the exact full purpose of this section. But I think the point of the minor subdivision was to kind of keep it simple for smaller subdivisions, I think that was a conversation we had with Craig a few times. Um, so just, in the, in the spirit of that, would we want the minor subdivision to have a lower um, application fee? I know a lot of that is used for the administrative purposes. Just a consideration.
Go ahead, George.
Um. I don't really have an opinion about that uh, so much, um. Because I'm not sure the fees we charge or even cover the town's cost, no matter if it's minor or major, but. The uh, it's the next line down in terms of the escrow account, I, I would think. Uh, we should, could eliminate that from the minor. Uh. That account is intended to fund us hiring a consultant or engineer. To help us with our technical review, and if we need an engineer to help us review a minor subdivision, we've done something seriously wrong.
I like your thinking, George, um.
Yep.
Hey, just strike that sentence, escrow fee.
Yep.
For the murder, yeah.
For the minor, yes, thank you.
For a minor, yeah, this is, this is only the minor subdivision section.
Yep.
Uh, going down.
One of them.
Oh.
I was gonna, on the fee issue, is that something that we do when the ordinance or do the selectmen set fees?
Yeah.
I don't know.
We, uh, whether it's right or wrong, the current ordinance has a dollar figure set in there. I'm thinking it's at the discretion of the board.
I actually like the idea that it's in the ordinance, I mean, it has a downside and it has an upside, the downside is that. If you don't amend the ordinance for a long period of time, as we have not. Uh, the fee becomes increasingly uh, too small. But the upside is, there've been problems with the fee structure or the select board not keeping the fee str- structure up to uh. The times, or not even be able to find the fee structure, at least that was our experience with the commercial development review ordinance. Um, and uh, and also the escrow account, so you know, if it's right in the ordinance, it can't get lost.
Let's go with it, I think right now the miners, we, we say eighty dollars. See that?
Yeah.
So the current, currently. Uh, for minor, say, uh, you pay eighty dollars.
I paid eighty dollars for a screen door the other day.
Yeah.
I paid eighty bucks to fill up my truck with gas, we, you know. So I think it's, I think it's good.
I paid seventy-nine for a hundred-foot extension cord the other day at Obeshaun, so.
Mm-hmm.
Must have been a thick one, a good heavy duty.
Yeah, it was a high amp one.
Yeah, this is all very, um, moving down, this is all very. Standard stuff, I think we still want to keep the fire board, the road commissioner, fire chief, superintendent, keep them involved for the subdivisions. I think that's currently in the plan as well for minor subdivisions.
I believe so. So Charles, I'm trying to, kind of dual task here with the current one and the new one.
Charles, can I? Um, revisit the issue of what you want to hear from us tonight, you just want things that are really major substantive. Issues, right, not. Gee, maybe we should change the sentence or that sentence.
Yeah, if you can, if it's very like. Um, language or really small things, you can note them and send them to me separately.
Okay.
Um, and I'll track them all in a different document. Uh, I'm just more looking, at least for, just to go through the process of minor and major. Because those, the next part will make a little bit more sense when we start getting into um. The required submissions. That's the language I, and and we'll be able to go through major faster as well.
Okay, I, I have something on page eleven then, that's. Policy oriented, uh, more major, even though it's, it would result, if um, others agreed, it would be. Minor and the number of words changed, but it has to do with the public um, notification. Uh, I think rather than just limiting it to a butters, we should uh, make it consistent with the commercial development review ordinance. Include all landowners within five hundred feet, I mean, these subdivisions, even a minor one. Well. I'd be amenable to not having it more than a butters for a minor subdivision, but um. Uh, I think we should consider the public notification requirement, whether it should be consistent with the commercial development review ordinance. A minor subdivision, this, what I was about to say, may not be uh, as true or true at all, but certainly with a major subdivision, it impacts the entire neighborhood, ju- not just the butters. And uh, and people should have an opportunity to know what's going on and participate in the process if they so choose. Um, whether the change, change, change uh, adhere to, from a butters to landowners uh, within five hundred feet. Um, I guess is debatable, but. I don't know what the other board members think.
I'd say that at some point, um. You know, uh, do we own the land, or are we renting it from the town? Um, can we make our own choices with our land? And do, you know, or are we just paying taxes and renting it from the town? Um, that's where I'm going with this, and no, five hundred feet's not very far, but if I want to put three damn lots. On my property. I don't care what somebody thinks down the road. It's my property, I pay taxes on it. If I go into a major subdivision where I, where it's gonna affect them more, then yes, I agree, then go with five hundred or whatever we have. But on a minor subdivision, it's not needed.
I, I could, I could live with that.
I, I can certainly support that idea too, Craig, you know, um, that a major one, uh. That's probably a very good point to say, we need to make sure people are aware.
You know, it's sort, it's sort of like the last point, it's. A minor subdivision has such a large ripple effect that it impacts an entire neighborhood, we've probably done something wrong with this ordinance.
Right, so do we just want to keep it as it is for butters?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm glad we talked it through, I, I hadn't really clarified my own thinking on this, but. But this will come up again at the major subdivision.
Yeah.
Section.
Hi, Luc.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, so here is kind of where things change different from what it was before. Um, so the mandatory suggestions, and I've worked through uh, these and made sure that they were consistent with the state, so that the minimum. Mandatory submissions do meet the state guidelines. And that's all in here, uh, so we'll skip down to C on page thirteen. Um, and this section kind of talks about the mandatory requirements for the preliminary application. Let me just do this. Very simple stuff, uh. Talking about sewage disposal that's supposed to be used on the subdivision. Uh, indication of the water supply system to be used in the subdivision. And obviously, I think. Here is where. I think the only thing that might be. I think the only thing that might be missing when I was doing my re- review before is that if it's in a shoreline zone or the, but I think that will come up in a map of uh, the property. I think that will be automatically like flagged. So if it isn't a shoreline zoning, that would have effect on the um, subdivisions well. And then instead of required submissions, it is additional submissions for minor subdivisions that may be required. So this is where we give kind of the room to the board that we had talked about last time and saying that you can add, you can add anything. You can add more. You can request more if in the site review, onsite visit or in the initial conversations that you had questions, this is where you can kind of require them in a preliminary plan.
Uh, Charles, uh, in that list of the potential additional information, there are two that I thought weren't really necessary for a minor subdivision.
Is that the roads one? Did I take that out or no?
Well, you kicked that out. There's not one for a road, but a high intensity soil survey. Um, I'm not sure is really necessary for something of the scale. And which is two on page fifteen. And um, and the contour lines at an interval specified by the plane board. Prior to that, it's already specified at ten feet.
Okay.
So I don't think that's necessary either. Um, and then in four, I would think that the hydro geological assessment. When um, to look at, you know, sewage disposals impact. Um, given the small number of lots, um. Unless this is in state law and I, and I didn't, you know, didn't think about that. I would think the line double I could be eliminated.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
I don't know what, you know, again, I, tho- those, you know, I would like to know what the other board members think, you know.
I agree uh, myself on your comments of what should be removed.
We were saying that, that in this, this section, that this could be required if we so desired.
The way it's crafted right now, yeah. And I'm suggesting that those items I just listed shouldn't even be on the table.
Right.
Just little, little I and uh, one and two, little I and little double I, right?
Right, and and two and three.
Yes, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah, and I think we're leaving this little three is kind of enough for um, other concerns, like if it's in a certain area of the town. I think that's the language we kind of agreed upon at one point. I think that's a good way to do it for minor.
Yep.
Especially when we have, if say, George, for a later conversation uh, with the water quality. If for some reason we know that there's reasonable sus- suspicion that this won't, not pres- reasonable presumption of no potable water in that um, in that area, for whatever reason, it would need to hit the performance guarantee. I think this is a section that I had suggested removing, the traffic impact analysis. But I think with the reason why is that if you do add three new dwelling units, there is always a chance for a trafficked impact in some capacity, usually not. Um, but I did note that it says we might not, it's hard to imagine a situation where a minor subdivision is really impacting the flow of traffic.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
I actually um thought that um seven would not be relevant. And um eight. Actually, even the soil erosion, I don't, I don't know about soil erosion control plan. I mean, if there's no road and no marri- major earthwork, but um, maybe there's some scenario that'll come up that uh, we should have that option in case they deal with that.
Yeah.
But um but seven and eight, I thought could be eliminated.
Yep. I agree.
What about ten? If it's in shoreline, we're gonna have, that's gonna kick it into something different, isn't it? Do we need ten at all?
I can double, I think that's a, you bring up a good point where is there a backup? Is there something in a different ordinance that would?
Cause if you're out in the middle of nowhere, then.
Well, and and usually uh, most of this drainage uh, water is related to the road ditching. Which there should be none.
Right.
Um. I can't answer your question about the shoreline, though.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good consideration, though. I'll make sure. Um, I can double check that note. Uh, so this is the, another county soil survey. Um, this one could come into play.
Yeah, but that's something I can pull up easily.
Right. And again, I will um, after we, after I do remove these, I will go through and make sure that it meets the minimum standards and state statute as well. So feel free to say, I don't think that's necessary. Um, and we can always do that. And then there's also a catchall for minor ordinances I put in as well. So saying that as the board may require any additional information to meet the requirement, the statutory review criteria. Also, so there's that, there is a catchall in some of the past.
It's good.
And then thirteen and fourteen are very, um, I think they're not too controversial. I'm not sure fourteen. I don't know how fourteen really plays into it. I've been spending a lot of time looking into the National Register of Historic Places and the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. Um, there's a lot of eligible houses throughout the region. So we can kind of keep that, I think, depending on the board and the town. I don't know, I'm not familiar with the town's comp plan. Um, to know what the historic and preservation goals are.
All four, there's all of four of them. Well, there's, we don't have any, we don't have any real protections for them at the town level. But we only have four in town.
Right.
Right.
So I'll, I'll keep that in for now.
Yeah, I think it's okay to keep it in. It doesn't hurt. It may not be applicable in many instances, but.
Yeah, and I'll also like you're not, it's a, if you're not destroying the house in a subdivision technically, I feel like that's a separate issue. But so I'll, I'll go through it. So we have a very, I think a really short list for the minor subdivision, which is good. And then also a catchall if we're not a hundred percent certain.
Yeah, yeah, just for the, for the record, uh, what, which are, which ones are the four that we're talking about?
Uh, what was that? Sorry.
The, the four historic sites. George.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the two that I know of is the um, down in Belgrade Lakes Village, the um, that stone house where they brought granite from Hollowell.
So this is the ones we talked about during the meeting last time, the uh, Tuesday meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the four, just for the four, it's the Chandler store. Um, Foster Farm Barn, the Pressy House. Oh, wait, no, that's wrong. I'm sorry. That was my bad. I was, those are, those are on Belgrade Low, the Birch's, Chandler Store and Foster Farm Barn, I believe. Um, anyway, so going down to the next section. Yeah. So going down to the next section, this is the minor subdivision final plan. Um, again, this section is very similar to what the final plan is. Um, requirement for. And I'll leave it up for a second just to give you a quick go through. Sorry for all the highlighting. Um, that's actually unnecessary, to be honest. Oh, now I've highlighted it all. So that was just for me to make sure I had the same language throughout, um, for consistency sake.
Charles, I have a question for you, and this may actually be something I missed in the preliminary. Um, but uh, maybe in the final, is there a place where um, if a uh, minor subdivision wants to connect to an existing public drinking water supply system, that they have to get permission and.
They have to get, yeah, that's um, yeah, that's in here for sure.
Okay, all right, because I know that's an issue that Anthony's quite concerned about in the contamination area.
Right.
Um, here, when water is to be supplied by an existing public water supply, a written statement from the servicing water district shall be submitted indicating that the di- district has reviewed and approved the water system design.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And, and I think that might be something that at a later date um, can be, I think because we're doing the subdivision ordinance first, that would still apply to it, but I think at a later date, once the public water supply, whatever entity it becomes. Whoever, whatever the oversight committee is or commission or body directly refers to that, but for now, we just kind of left it vague in case obviously there are more in the future. Who knows?
Right.
And so my only question's kind of in the so I, the one thing I noticed and kind of in the vein of keeping minor subdivisions, uh, low cost, low impact. Uh, is that it requires another application for the final plan as well. Um, twenty dollar per lot or dwelling unit. I don't know how important the fees are, but that's just something
It's pretty minor to me, I mean, twenty dollars.
Yeah, and that's, that's at most eighty dollars um, for, but yeah. Um, this is one thing that I'm not sure if we prioritize the middle of the minor subdivision final plan, the following approvals must be obtained in writing. So I don't think we would need the main department of transportation, traffic permit, that kind of stuff, but I just kind of left it all in here. Um, I don't know if these are too burdensome, burdensome.
Well, I think they may not be too burdensome because we say where applicable, right?
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, the board members might help me up my thinking, but I'm thinking if we're looking at a minor and, and would there be opportunity to rule out? Like, for example, that, that six is required or five is required or four or three. Number of those things would never, rarely happen, I think, like I mean, they may, but it wouldn't be every time, like three.
Well, or, or one, because the, the trigger for a site law approval is fifteen lots and thirty acres. There's no way a miner's ever gonna trigger that.
Right. So maybe that one could even be tossed out.
Yeah.
I'll just double check everything here, too.
Okay. I, I think the flexibility is nice, Charles, and I appreciate the fact that you left those things in there. Because there might be places where it could be applicable, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's just something that I took um, from a kind of a whole process. And like, there's this part to it as well, that if the board is unsure whether or not then I'll, I'll double check that section, um.
Okay.
And this is kind of the situation where for like the historic building, if it applies, then talk to the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. Makes sense. Uh, this is all very standard stuff.
Yeah.
Um, the applicant has to be there, uh, issued a data receipt. Uh, this is within thirty days of determining if the plaintiff received a complete application. A copy of the notice shall be sent by first festival to a budding landowners, a budding municipalities if necessary, and to the applicant at least ten days prior before the hearing. A very standard stuff here for process. It still requires you to meet the performance guarantees. And all that, so going down to the.
I have a question about that, Charles.
Yeah.
And it, the answer may, I, I, I may know the answer. Um, because under state statute, we have to make a finding about financial and technical capacity. But um, I was wondering for a minor, is financial uh, performance guarantee even necessary?
Yes.
It is necessary, okay. It's, I mean, it's required under state law.
Yeah. Um, I, I think the, the important is to, because if you don't require that from the applicant, then it's on the board. Um, to meet those, and I think it's just generally better if the applicant also kind of performs that. I, I, it is there. Yeah, I, I would just say yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's just a good thi- I think it's a good thing to have. I don't think it's a hundred percent necessary. Um, but there could be ways where the minor subdivision, just smaller projects, so it's probably easier to really do that, but that's a good question. I can, I can make a note to look to, because I think that's something else worth considering. Um, and then here is again the mandatory submissions. And again, I tried to make a uh, good faith effort to make sure that does meet the requirements for review criteria. Uh, that it does catch, touch upon each point at least to some extent. And, and these are all small questions, like does Belgrade have a submissions checklist? I assume that the town has something or can create something of that nature.
Yes, we have that capability.
Is, is such a submission, submission checklist something that is, is available on our forms in the our town website or something like that?
It's, I don't think it's there now, Sarah, but, but it can be, and I think that's what Charles is talking about.
Yeah, and, and that would be part of the, if this ordinance, when this ordinance passes, it would have to go um, to the town, and the town have to create these applications.
Okay, thank you.
Or at least, well, yeah, we require them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry, you have to deal with the newbie, you know?
Oh, no worries.
No, that's a good question, because uh,
That was my comment, too. Don't worry, Sarah.
Yeah. Because it'll not only will we have to create new checklists, but and post those, but also they're available to developers, but we'll also have to redo the application and possibly other items as well.
Yeah. And you'd have, there might have to be. So also, that's a good thing to consider now, because I had to complete a minor subdivision final plan application form. So the way I have it written right now, that's four different forms. One for the minor preliminary, minor major, or sorry, minor preliminary, minor final, major preliminary, major final. But we can, I think that's more of a process. There might be a best way to do that, so we can or you might just say, get the form from the town office. So I think the things to note here, very standard stuff, indication of sewage disposal, George, the water supply system.
Yeah. Thank you.
Very, very standard stuff. I'm just going down. I don't think this is necessary, just going off a street plan. Because if you're adding streets, it's not a minor.
Right.
I think the changes that we make in the preliminary plan should be reflected in here as well.
Right.
And I will do that as well. And that's another note.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, so the note that I made here, covenants for mandatory membership in the lot, in the lot owners association. I think I kept this because I do think there could be a homeowners association, which is three or four dwelling units. In some capacity. I know that when you think of developments with an owners association, they would probably be major. But I did want to consider that if there is a homeowners association, even with a small development. It should be in this section.
But it doesn't make it mandatory, correct? So that doesn't make, that doesn't make it, so you have to have a association. It just says, if there is, you need covenances.
Yeah, yeah. Because it shouldn't be mandatory.
Right.
It should be required, it it should be, it's necessary if it exists.
Yeah, yeah, that might need a little clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a note here. It's a good catch, Craig.
I mean, usually those kind of associations sort of hover around the road maintenance, and since there is no road maintenance, these are probably unlikely, but.
Good point. So for the final plan, I, at some point, and for the, so for the preliminary plan, it's additional. But I didn't feel too comfortable doing the same thing I can. I think it'd be make more sense if it's additional for both. So I kind of left this section what it was. So this is everything. So these are required submissions for which a waiver may be granted. I don't know if we want to make the preliminary plan and the final plan consistent and having them both additional requirements. That the board may ask over, for right now, these would have to be a waiver must be maybe granted.
I was wondering. I don't really have a thought on on the question you just posed, Charles, in terms of the process. I was just wondering whether the soil erosion control plan, the stormwater management plan. And the phosphorus. Whether that's really applicable to a
A minor.
You know, four lot subdivision without a road, unless it's in the shoreline zone. So maybe just required submissions for subdivisions in the shoreline zone or something like that. I don't know how others think about that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. And I can, and what I can do in that situation, just take out of this section. And saying if it's in a shoreline zone. Have these as well.
Yeah.
So it's just a very concrete final application.
Yep, that's, that would be better.
Yeah, cool.
Like it.
Well. Again, the rest of the section. Is very stand, is literally the same as it was, just the final proven filing. I was considering adding a separate article for final approval and filing. Because of the same for both. For both minor and major, the final approval and filing are identical.
Okay.
That's not really, I don't think it really makes a huge difference, but for clarity's sake, it might be better to have it on its own. Because I think I had a note at some point, Nick had it as a separate article.
I agree with that.
Very minor.
Your earlier question about you know, the timeline for completion of construction.
This is, this is where it was.
Yeah, it's on page twenty five. For for at least for the minor, and and I think there's comparable language for the major to fail, it's has to do, it's restricted to construction. So not sale of lots. So failure to commence substantial construction of the subdivision within two years of the date of approval and signing of the plan should render the plan null and void. So again, you know, some I mean, that shouldn't be a big deal here at all, because presumably they're not going to be constructing much of anything. But it'll be more important in a major subdivision that, you know, has a large internal road system or something of that nature.
Yeah.
Plus, I mean. On a minor, they're they're going to break off a few lots, but they're going to repay an individual taxes on each lot, so they're going to want to get them done anyways.
Right.
Right, there's incentive to get them done, right?
Yeah, no, that Yeah, and again, this just applies to construction, not sale of the lot, so.
Right.
Actually, I think for the reason why I said choose one or both, you can also choose neither in this situation. I think the second one is, I don't see any I think five years is is a safe bet, but I don't know if we really want, if there's like a real purpose for this. For this section. I don't know if the town wants to have that five year time period for substantial. I I don't think it, it's kind of like, that forces people to do something on their land, but I don't know if we want that. I see, I just see, I see both sides of it, really.
Yeah. We're talking about a minor, right?
This isn't a minor, yes.
So I was trying to think, like, how likely is it that a minor would be a phased development plan, except in the case of a phased development?
The scenario that Craig raised is the more likely not that they're going to phase in a minor subdivision.
Yeah, it's just saying, like, do you want those lot? I think this kind of forces lots to be used. I think from at least, like, from a tax process perspective and an assessing perspective. The sooner you get something on the property, the higher the value of the property.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah. We can do something kind of I would feel, I would just feel a little uncomfortable removing both of them entirely without having some sort of like revisiting it within five years. Maybe not, I think rendering the plan null and void, because something could come up where they might not be able to do construction for three or four years. Especially if it's like an individual doing the building themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess just a quick question on that. The fact that there's a, I live on a timeline, and I like timelines and all kind of stuff. So I guess my question would be not having the the timeline there, two, two or five years. Why would we the drawback of it?
The only thing I can come off of the top of my head is what I said before, is that it's the the land's just not being used. If there there is intent to use it as a subdivision. Then there's kind of just an empty lot sitting there, but again.
We we have an applicant, I have no idea of this, but that's what I'm asking. If we had an applicant that has a piece of land and said, well, I'm going to do a subdivision, do they have to pay more taxes to the town? Or or they pay less taxes to the town? I I have no idea.
It's more, each lot is individually taxed. So if we subdivide it, from the time it passes subdivision, there's four lots, so it's going to be four individual taxes. This says that they want you to build on it so they even get more taxes, but I don't think they should be telling us when to do stuff to our land, even though we already subdivided, so we're already paying taxes on the land separately. It's no one's business when we do anything with it.
Okay, that clarifies my 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 question. Thank you.
Yeah, so I can just remove both of these. I'm very open to that. Is that, is I feel, I feel like that's where the board is leaning towards.
Yeah.
For minor, yeah, in under
Minor.
Yeah, for mine, this is just for minor. Major, I would probably fight harder to keep it.
Yeah.
I will.
I have major.
Yeah. But this is, this is, Craig, this is what I was referring to before. But it is, I'll just get rid of it. All right, so that was minor. Sorry, I'm kind of moving through this a little slowly. I just want to make sure we get to minor and major, but the good thing with major, nothing has changed since the last time you went through all of the procedure. It is the same as it's been for the last three months, for as long as I've been working with Belgrade.
Now, be before you go deep into this, can we have like a five minute break? Just to stretch our legs.
It's up to Peter.
I'm certainly open to that. I want to thank you, Sarah, for bringing it up. I know sometimes we just plow ahead, you know? Charles, if you're okay, let's take a five minute break. I want to get a glass of water. I'll be right back.
That'd be so nice. Thank you.
To return a ten of.
A ten of, yes. Thank you. I believe we are, so.
So is okay, sharing. My share, what am I sharing?
You are sharing. Or we can see what you have.
Perfect, the major subdivision.
Yep.
Perfect. Who knows what I'm sharing? All right. So we went through there's nothing bad, but I don't so for the major subdivision, again, it has not changed. It's very, it's exactly what it was. I did change, obviously, the major subdivision preliminary plan, the major subdivision final plan, made all that language much more consistent.
Yep.
So I'll just kind of go through again. If on a second read of this, make notes if we want to keep the the escrow fee, two hundred fifty per lot or dwelling unit. But generally, it is untouched from what it was the last time.
So so I guess in D D two. I I'd like to revisit who gets notified. I again, I for a major, I think it should be expanded to all landowners within five hundred feet to be consistent with the comprehend, with the Commercial Development Review Ordinance.
And so for that, you would just make it consistent, notify all landowners within five hundred feet?
Correct.
Right. Okay, moving down. Very I think all this stuff is really okay. Oh, again, these are the mandatory submissions for the preliminary plan, so I will stop here. I don't know why everything's underlined, but we can fix at a later date. And I and I don't think anyone is going to have a major issue with these, because this is, again, a major subdivision. Do you want me to keep going? If you want me to stop at any point?
Good for now.
I'm good for now.
Yeah, yeah, and and again, I don't think we really have to go through a lot of these. That highlights for me, just to make sure, I think the phosphorus control standards are going to be in a separate article, are going to be, I think it's part of the performance guarantee, rather than being a necessary own article. This is the hydro geological assessment, something we talked a lot about, but again, I think we've already that's the catch all, that's also in the above one. So
So the hydro geological.
Yeah.
Hydrogeologic.
All right, now. Can you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, so basically it it gives it the, the the board, if there's a reasonable presumption of no potable water on the property. But it is also required if it's when it's not served by a public sewer and any of either of these three. So over an aquifer, average density of one dwelling unit per hundred thousand feet. Or there's a reasonable presumption, that's kind of what we're talking about with the contaminated areas. Which we're going to again, return to later, right after this.
So it's not necessary on everyone, it's just these few things that kick it into.
It's only when it is not served by a public sewer and any of these three, so it has to be not served by public sewer and one of these three, so if they say that we should have clean water, we don't need a hydrologic, hydrogeologic assessment. And I think these three are very standard, so if you do have a high density development, you probably do want the hydrogeologic assessment. I think when we originally talked about the water, I think that's when we had I forget the gentleman's name from the DEP. He came and Anthony was here, and it's just something to keep that if it is a very dense development. Probably, you know, it's going to be serving a lot of people, they're going to be drilling their own well, and having that is good for the town.
More than one dwelling per hundred thousand, so that's two and a half acres. So if if you have a subdivision. There's thirty acres and you're subdividing half of it. You're going to have this assessment.
If it's dwelling units, yes.
Because I thought we changed that to something that we could pull online, pull off line, that was a lot cheaper than having a engineer coming in.
I think that's
Six thousand, seven thousand dollar test right there, isn't it? I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm not too sure.
The Craig. If you're talking about the suggestion I had come up with as sort of a compromise. That was, didn't really deal with on, you know, what impact may onsite wastewater dis disposal have on groundwater or drinking water supplies. It had to do with if there were nearby mapped potential groundwater contamination sources like junk.
Yes, now I remember that, yeah.
And and I, and we should answer your question first, but I have Charles, just for your information, I have some language to be added in this section, too, in terms of what should be provided. So that you can meet the the performance standard.
With the updated language change that you're proposing, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I I we don't want to skip over Craig's question.
Right. I think what Craig is Um, I think what Craig is referring to for that least like the DEP EGAD, the environmental geographic analysis database. Craig, was that what you were referring to?
What, um, George was just saying, but, uh. So this is pretty expensive test. And a hundred thousand. You know, we all, our our ordinance always says forty thousand.
You wanna make it average dens- density or more than one dwelling unit per forty thousand square feet?
Well, whatever, one acre is forty three thousand, five hundred, whatever it is.
Yes.
Charles, you know about the basis of that hundred thousand. Square feet.
I can double check to see if they have, cause I know that, let me see if I have it near me.
The the reason I ask is I'm trying to look at this from a sort of groundwater contamination perspective and. And, um. You know, where there've been subdivisions in towns like, um. Wyndham and and Gray and places like that, that relied on subsurface waste disposal and ended up. Contaminating everybody's, uh, private wells in the neighborhood. They had considerably smaller lots than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, so what I'm reading right now from the state's model ordinance, they made a note for here. Um, statute requires that applicants show there no be no adverse impact on groundwater. Um. Generally, with an average density of less than one dwelling unit per a hundred thousand square feet, groundwater impact should not be of concern. There are instances however, where due to site considerations or the design of the development, an assessment should be conducted.
Okay, so take that hundred thousand square feet, does that include the non-buildable? That we generally have, so that includes the whole subdivision? Or just a lot?
I would say it would be the whole subdivision.
Yeah.
So if you have, like, in my case, I had like three, four, or five acres down there, that's included in that. If that's the case, I can deal with that.
Yeah, and I think if we do change, so that's based off of the, um, review standard and the the performance guarantee. That we're gonna talk later, so if we do make a change. Um, to the content of that, we can reflect it in this section. Um, because there might be a way to say that maybe it's not an average density thing, but if we have a reasonable presumption. Or other, but again, the this paragraph below, the board may require a hydrological deassessment in other cases. Um, so there's kind of two catchalls here as well. But I think the purpose of this, the of little two, of little I two, is, um. For larger, like, uh, subdivisions for residential. So we could say residential subdivisions or something like that, or we can just kind of. Keep this in mind as we edit the chat text later tonight.
Well, isn't all of our subdivisions residential? I thought we had that wording earlier.
That's in minor. This is we're in major now.
Oh, so it's, okay, so.
Could be apartment complex.
Yeah.
Could be a commercial subdivision.
Yeah, and this is the something that. I can imagine, and and we had, we have talked about this. Part as well as that if you are doing a major resident, especially a residential subdivision. Um, and there is a contaminated water that isn't caught through this process. Um, I think that goes on to the town, and then that would be as another public water supply situation. But that that's like the worst case scenario. I don't wanna like scare you with that, but in that situation where it was missed. And it wasn't in our ordinance, then there's a chance that the town would be lo- could be liable.
I I almost feel like that, not knowing any of this, being new to this, that that for I I. Has something to do with a precedence. And that have been established there for that reason. Uh, that is already, we already have history that. Messing around with that number will put us in danger, so it's almost like a buffer statement. That's my impression anyways.
Charles, there was something that I, um. Missed and wanted to mention, uh, just a little further up on that same page, and there's paragraph one. Uh, with regard to phosphorus control, and the way that's currently written, that first whole front first line is. Should be eliminated first off, that that's from the existing ordinance, back when we thought the only lakes with problems were Salmon and McGrath. And that's far from true now, but that that's minor, uh, the the, my question is. Under what circumstance would we agree to waive the phosphorus control? Uh, pla- uh, s- standards. For a major subdivision. I I can't think of a single one. Um, and so I was wondering if it shouldn't be moved to the required submissions.
I think that's a great question, because perhaps. When before. Um. A subdivision was not in Salmon or McGrath, maybe there was some consideration for that.
Right.
We we have concerns for.
Yeah, right, all the all the lakes are of concern now, and so. Versus just two out of the whole chain.
Right.
I had to submit one on Great Bone.
Yeah, and also I don't think one, that's a that's another good catch, George. I don't think that's consistent with shoreline zoning also.
Good point.
Yeah.
So we're gonna remove, even though you're moving it, it's still gonna remove the Salmon Lake and McGrath Bone thing, right?
Yes, I think I think there might be a better way to say all in like. Watersheds or resource protection shoreline zoning areas.
Yeah, yeah.
So there'd be very few, if we did add that qualifier, there would be very few where it wouldn't be the case, where it wouldn't be required, but.
I mean, there's no place you could put a subdivision Belgrade not be in the direct watershed of one of the lakes.
Yeah, right, yeah. So I'll I'll move that to, uh, mandatory submissions. And.
I think that's a good idea personally.
Going down, this is the traffic impact. I think these are important, depending, especially depending on, I think that's why it's a required submission. Um. There could be larger traffic implications for whatever. And then again, there's another catchall that they may require any additional information if it doesn't meet a statutory review criteria of the state law. Right.
Final.
Again, so this is this is moving to the major subdivision final plan. Um. I think all of these are, I would say all of this is very important to add. Um, I think there's I have to make a note somewhere here that notifications must be sent to. Within to make it sure it's, um, within five hundred feet, the notification.
Alright.
Right.
Yeah, I'll write that down. Major. And yeah, so the the mandatory submissions, we can just run through these really quick. Um, this is for the ma- the mandatory submissions for the final one. Here is the water supply system, same language, private wells, um, if it is. This is where a hydrogeol- uh, hydrogeologic study would be submitted. And I think this needs to change to reflect the reasonable. Yeah. I think this section needs to add, um. If it. It doesn't, how am I trying to fit it? So if it's supplied by private wells in the preliminary, it doesn't require it. Unless it's met meeting those two standard, the three dots we were just talking about. But in the final plan, if the water is to be supplied by private wells. Evidence of adequate groundwater is required no matter what. So do we wanna add something here that says if not required in the preliminary plan? Or if required in the preliminary plan, then they shall submit the hydrogeologic exam?
Oh, I I see your point. I I would, I I would think. Uh, if if not, you know, it's up to us to require it at the preliminary stage if it's necessary, and. I assume we don't need to require twice. Um. And my thought was it would be best to get that on the table as early in the process. For the benefit of the developer as well as for the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should say if required previously, just to attach it, because you don't need to get a new one.
Right.
Um, just.
Well, and that's, I guess, a sort of a basic question. I I would maybe erroneously, I was making the assumption that anything that's submitted. In the preliminary stage, uh, split preliminary application would. De facto become part of the final application. As well. Am I incorrect about that, Charles?
There's a lot of. I think all of it, like, so here's an indication type of sewage disposal. I think it does ask for it twice in case in the preliminary plan, there are changes to it. So I think the reason is to ask for it again is just to make sure that's all.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. I I I would have thought that you would need two of them, because when you do a preliminary. There are things that are gonna happen to the subdivision. So you're gonna be shaking that land somehow. So I I think that should be, uh, before and after. That would be my opinion anyways.
Yeah, I I'd agree, and I and George, I don't think you would need, I think if you got the water exam for the. The test for the preliminary, you could attach the same test in the final plan.
Right.
Um, unless for some reason the test didn't cover something or it wasn't complete, but I'm not. I think this is just to put a final application, it helps for the public record too, and I think if something does change between the preliminary and the final. You'll want to have just them rehash it again.
Yeah, okay, I I understand your point now. Yeah.
But I do think if we aren't requiring it in the preliminary, we shouldn't require it in the final.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yes, I would, I would agree.
Because then there's no point of putting it in the preliminary if we're just gonna require it anyway.
Right.
I have a question about, uh. See on that same page up always, and this is maybe kind of a minor point, but. Uh, and I know, I know the model, this is right from the model ordinance, but, um, the. Individual lots, th- this does not require them to be marked, uh. And I I only asked because when I did this site visit of a subdivision that came before us on Route eight and eleven. Uh, even though it was just a three lot subdivision, half the time I didn't know where the heck I was, what lot I was on. Cause there were no, uh, there were no boundary markers. I- is there a reason why the lots aren't marked?
Well. Until you get through the, um, application to know whether you're gonna do it. I mean, you could have it surveyed and a plan submitted. But until you know you're gonna pass, why would you go that step further?
Okay, I get it. Yeah, I understand.
We're we're okay with leaving this.
And 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 lot configurations could potentially change through the process too. So you wouldn't wanna waste your money on boundary markers and stuff like that prematurely.
Yeah, and this is, this is the final, so there is no changes after this, no changes.
Right. So so Charles, you asked for okay to leave C, and I think the answer is yes.
Yeah. Um, this is all very like, kind of the stuff we removed from the minor, so like road names, street plans. Public use, uh, common land or open space. I think this is where we wanna add the, make the same change. For covenants and member, uh, mandatory membership and associations.
Yeah.
If not, if applicable. Cause I think that, I think it's important in some, but not for other types of large scale developments. Yeah, and then going on to next section, the required submissions for which a waiver may be granted.
The titles and dates of some of the, uh, DEP documents referenced have changed, uh, I can send those to you though, Charles.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then again, I'll move the final approval and final filing, and I'll just say, um. No final plans shall be, no major subdivision final plans or minor subdivision final plan shall be approved. So.
Right, yeah.
Just keep it a separate article so that it's not confusing.
Okay.
Um, and then here, the final comment, um, at least for this sub- the substance for that I wanted to bring up tonight. Um, is this. These last two pieces that we removed from the minor, but now that we're in the major, uh.
Yes, you're saying we'd wanna keep these here, is that correct?
For major, so this is part of, this whole section is gonna be a new article, so final approval and filing, I'll make a new article. Um, but for major subdivision ordinances, do you want to have? Uh, for major subdivisions, do you want to have that? Construction timeline, the commence substantial's construction.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Put an ending date, it just, it's a starting date, correct?
This is failure to commence and then. Failure to complete substantial, so you have to start it within two years.
Yeah.
And then complete substantial construction within five years.
Yeah, and substantial, I think there's a legal definition for that. It's not a hundred percent complete, it's like. You've you've really made quite a bit of progress.
Yeah, that would be.
Got the infrastructure, the river, the power, the.
Right.
Um, but it doesn't mean it has to be complete. In five years.
Right.
Just. So how can we, um, substantial construction?
That would just be a definition that we would put in the chapter.
Yeah, I believe there already is a definition. Charles, I I have another more major thing that I wanted to bring up. For a potential discussion of inclusion in this final approval section, and and that is, um. Standard conditions of approval. Uh, we have those in the existing ordinance, and we have those in the commercial development review ordinance. And it would seem like we should have them for this ordinance as well, and and that this would seem like a logical place to put them.
Uh. Yeah. So especially for consistency.
Well, for consistency and and enforceability, that's the reason why we put it in the commercial development review ordinance, because there are too many times where. The code enforcement officer couldn't. Act, uh, on a complaint because of, um. Um, well, basically somebody doing something other than what they got approval for, but because it wasn't a condition. That said, you get approval for what you applied for, nothing more, nothing less, um. My words, not the words of the condition, of course, but.
Right, yeah, if you want to send, I don't, I'm not opposed to adding it at all.
Yeah, um, you could take them right from the commercial development. You could take them right from the commercial development review ordinance, I would think.
And what's the language, what's the so for my purpose of looking up what, what, what should I be looking for, the name exactly? I have the ordinance, just the name of the process and section.
Yeah, give me a second, okay?
Yeah.
I think it's in the administrative section, but I'll find it for you.
Yeah, be great. And kind of similar to that. I haven't made any changes, so I'm about to zoom down here. To, this should be. The appeal section, we had talked about. I think kind of briefly last week. So this is the exact same appeals process from the commercial development review ordinance. And then the only note says that there might need to be specific changes for the subdivision ordinance. For variances and things of that nature, but I'm not. I don't feel 100% comfortable because I'm not familiar with your town board of appeals and the legal proceedings behind the board of appeals, if there are any. So it might be a question for the town attorney, and I don't know if we can fully. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing this section entirely on my, on our own, if that makes sense. And I can look other places, but for a specific board of appeals for a minorly tailored ordinance, it might be important to make sure that we have the exact correct language.
One other way to kind of skin that cap would be, once we have like our next draft, would be to ask the board of appeals to review this section.
It's probably a very good idea.
When we change the appeal section in this, in this shoreline zoning ordinance that proved to be helpful. I'm still looking, Charles.
Yeah, no worries. I'll be able to write down. But yeah, I'd feel really I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we went to the board of appeals for that. If the, if you guys are up for making that contact, I think just for the quality of it. Because I did take the language exactly from the commercial development. I feel like there's different types of variances. But yeah, so for at least the process, sorry, that was very slow and kind of going through, but I wanted to make sure we actually had the opportunity to fully go through it. And I think once George gets me that section, and George, you can send it to me afterwards as well, if that's easier.
Yeah, why don't I do that?
That's no big deal.
You're flipping pages.
But because I did the next part, I was going to pass it back to the board and let you guys bring up your larger questions. And since George had suggested language change for the sufficient water section, I figured we could start there.
Um, sure.
Give me a minute. Yeah, I'm going to try to find it as well. Sorry if I.
Yeah, I got it. So we're in 12, I guess, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, so I didn't share this with everybody. I just shared it with you and Peter, Charles, so I'll have to read it.
Yeah, I can, I have it pulled up too. Let me.
And just in a way of explanation, Craig, this is wording it to implement what you were describing earlier.
So George, you see the, your language that you sent me.
You're right. I do. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I, I think this is what we had talked about. I think I had, I have it somewhere in my notes to make that change. I don't think I did, so that was a good catch.
So this is why you can pull up online. What was the hydrological study? Is that drilling a well before they're approved for any?
It kind of depends. So even if the way I've crafted this, or at least the intent is to that. Let's say there's a junkyard on the property line, or even on the property where the subdivision is. A geologist would look at that and before they did any kind of invasive work like groundwater monitoring wells, that's where the big bucks come in. They would look at things like existing geological mapping, like bedrock, the direction of bedrock fractures. They would just look at topography and things like that. And they may be able to rule out. You know, they might be able to say groundwater is flowing in the opposite direction. You don't need to do anything more. There's, you know, my professional opinion, it'll be fine. Or it may say, oh gosh, you know, this could be a real threat. And then at that point, you're talking about putting in some groundwater monitoring wells to actually click water samples, see to verify whether there really is any contamination already there, and there might not be. And so you could rule it out that way. But that would be the more, that would be the most expensive scenario, right? But you know, in a lot of cases, at least in my experience, a lot of times you can rule these things out. Without doing that, going to that expense and to that kind of invasive type of work. Actually, you can, there's one, actually one step in between for some cases. Let's say, say it's oh, I don't know. Well, let's stick with the junkyard. They could do soil test. If, if it was on the subdivision, they probably wouldn't get permission to do this on somebody else's property. But if it was on the subdivision property itself, they probably would do soil testing. And they would test for petroleum and some of the hazardous substances and could rule it in or rule it out on that basis as well. Because if there's no soil contamination, then there isn't going to be any groundwater contamination.
So George, what this does is it helps rather than just jumping to the more expensive solution, there are the lesser expensive, lesser intrusive ways to help rule out whether or not this is going to be required or not, right?
Right, yeah. And then 98% or whatever of the subdivisions that come to us, they'll never have to go beyond providing us with the existing mapping.
But where it does fit, it, to have the hydrogeological investigation is when it hasn't been ruled out. That some kind of contamination has, has occurred. So I just want to make sure we're talking about this in a way that we're thinking, and I think Craig, you were concerned about the cost for the developer in particular, right? You wouldn't have just jumped to that expense straight away in every case, right? It would just be in some cases, it would probably end up falling that way.
And that would be a very small minority of cases. For a town like Belgrade, that would be the case. If we were in gray, it might be a different matter.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where all the gravel pits were used for disposing of waste oil.
Yep. Because it's all about risk, right? That's what we're trying to do is to, to help determine that. The good thing about this approach, in my opinion, is that we're, we're utilizing tools that have already been developed or that are, and that are in place. Not having to reinvent the wheel at all.
I'll put it in for now.
Yeah. And I think there's only, George, I would only make minor changes. Like if any of the above are present on the proposed subdivision, just really minor things like that.
Yeah, no, feel free to wordsmith.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no pride of authorship.
So I think I'll make this change, and I'll double check that it does meet the state statutes. Well, I think it does. And again, for, at least for water quality, this is just in the performance and development standards. So I think the combination of these two are really strong. Because we're trying not to say you need a hydrogeologic assessment, no matter what. I think with these two, with these two here, we have a really strong water quality case. So I will stop sharing my screen for now. And kind of talk about what at least I'm envisioning. I think we have a really good draft right now. It's taken a while, but I think we're in a really good spot. So I would, I don't know if we, if I, I'm not sure what you are all feeling about it right now. I think there's still some minor changes that need to be made, and I'll do another final review of it as well, just to make sure that all the changes we make are consistent.
So Charles, from my perspective, I think we made great progress getting to this spot. We kind of waffled a little bit about the major minor thing for a bit, and had some ideas. And I think what we have in place is, is a very helpful path forward with particular ordinance. I think it's in great shape myself.
And I think there's good intent behind the minor and major as well. And I think we've kind of been able to preserve that throughout.
Then the only other part that I want to make sure to mention is that, like George had brought up. I mean, we know that there's a place in Belgrade that's got basically potable water issues, right? The DOT came in and talked to us. We already know that. So having something in place in our ordinance to help address that aspect is going to be very important going forward.
Yeah, I agree.
So those two aspects to me are some of the biggest improvements that we have with this, plus keeping it up to date with state law and some other minor reference changes, but I think we're in good shape.
Yeah, I agree.
Charles, there was just one last item I wanted to just bring to your attention that is in the current ordinance and it didn't get moved over into this one. And it's in on page 53, retention of open space. We currently have a requirement that for subdivisions greater than 10 acres, that a minimum of 15% of the total subdivision area is retained as open space. And that could, open space traditionally, at least in the subdivisions I'm familiar with, have been used in buffer areas or protecting gear yards or whatever. But that's in the existing ordinance. And I was just curious what other towns did. Vassalboro, China, Reed Field, Rome, Fayette, they all have comparable requirements. The only difference is we're, we're the only town I found that only starts that requirement at some size, you know, of subdivision at 10 acres. In our case, they require it smaller, smaller subdivisions. The only town that doesn't have that that I could find is Sydney.
Right. I remember seeing that. I'm curious if there's a minimum requirement for public use. I'm trying to think of where it might be in another project I'm working on where that's coming up, but I can kind of report back on that.
Yeah, so where you'll find that in the current ordinance is 10.2A on page 28.
And that's just a required 15% of the subdivision?
Right, but only for subdivisions larger than 10 acres.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look into that and kind of see what I can find, because I don't.
Now, you said page 53 or page 28, George?
28.
28, okay.
Of the current.
Yeah, the current ordinance. Oh, you're right, Sarah. I was, my comment has to do with page 53 of the draft, but I was referencing page 28 of our existing ordinance. Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
Yes, yeah. Just real quick, is that something that the board would want to see a requirement for larger subdivisions?
Yeah, I'm fine with keeping it the same as we have if it fits with the state.
Yeah, I don't think it's a there might be a minimum for the state, but I don't think the state says you can't do a required 15% for public user. But I'll just double check and I'll make a note to return to you, or I'll just throw, I'll let you know if I put it into the next draft. But Peter, before we did close this, I just did want to talk about what are the next steps that you guys would want me to do with this?
Well, we need a draft so we can study it for a while. And I don't know if they want a meeting to go over it or whatever, but.
I think we'd have to meet one more, at least once the, Charles gets these things put in and changed, that we get a copy and we have an opportunity, not just a couple of days, but a week or two or something to be able to review it closely and then have the meeting where we can discuss it again.
Yeah, I can get it to you next week. And then just let me know when you want me to come to the next meeting, if that's simple enough.
Go ahead, Peter. Sorry.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, that sounds great. I think what Craig and Rich have said are right on the mark. So if we can get your product, Charles, next week. I cannot promise that, let's see now, next week is. So the first meeting in, in May, I can't promise that we'd have openings on that one, but maybe the second meeting in May?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And planning board, does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Yeah.
Probably. So Charles, the I have a number of more minor things for your consideration. Should I just like do a markup copy and send that to you? Or what's the?
You can do a markup copy. You can just say this section, if that's easier for you. Either way.
All right. And when would you like that? Why?
If you can get to me by a week from now, that'd be great.
Okay.
And that goes, that, that's not only for George. If everyone wants to take a read of this draft and kind of go through and make notes, because there aren't, there's a lot of we didn't touch a lot of the document tonight. So a lot of the changes that I'm going to make based off of this meeting aren't really there's a lot more in this document and yeah.
Thanks, Charles. Really appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. And if you have any questions about anything, feel free to shoot me an email.
I, can I go back a bit? Nothing to do with what we talked tonight, but in reading through it, and I missed a meeting or two early on with the review of the revisions here. I noted in the amendment section, it says amended by town body. And then it was a second alternative or whatever, talked about the planning board. If the town body doesn't, where
That, that's going to change. That needs to that just needs to say the, these regulations may be amended by the town of Belgrade. It should just say the town of Belgrade.
All right, yeah, I did. I saw that and I thought, is this even legal? Or what are we trying to do here? So, okay.
No, 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 no. That's, that's, I haven't, I'm looking at that right now.
Yeah, only the voters have that authority in our.
Yeah, that's from my, that, I have a comment from November 9th, saying I don't think this is right.
And yeah, are you looking at the electronic copy or the paper copy?
I'm looking at the electronic copy. It's on page five. It's in the authority administration amendment section.
Right, I know you are, Charles. I'm asking Rich, because I'm thinking he may not be privy to the electronic note that you have written.
I have, I'm not looking at anything because of my tablet. I have, I'm not looking at anything because of my tablet.
Yeah, no, I I know exactly what you're talking about. And that was me being like, I don't think the planning board can do this, but I I hadn't been developed, so.
They haven't made us ki- king and queens yet.
No, because this is, that's from the model ordinance, so that applies to all municipalities and they don't, the state doesn't care about towns that have town meetings, they in their administrative structures. Like, they just didn't, they don't consider it often, like local authorization and cannabis. They just said, you can figure it out.
You usually know it's going to be the first senator here?
No.
Right. But uh, yeah, again, so send me your thoughts. I'll get a draft either out um next week, but I'll I'll give a week for you guys to give feedback and probably um just looking at how in the week of twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, I'll get that to you. Um. What what would be the earliest date, Peter, I guess, would be the next planning board? Is that the sixth?
So I believe you are correct that if I look ahead on the calendar, sixth of May is the first meeting for us in in the month.
All right, then I'll play, I'll, I can shoot you and um Anthony an email tomorrow, just be like, if I am going to come to the first planning board meeting, I'll get a draft out next week. If not, I'll let you guys have some feedback time, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I know some feedback time.
Yeah. Great. Cool. Any other questions before I head off?
No, thank you.
Yeah, just sincere sincere. Thank you, Charles. So hey, this, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate all of your dedication. So everyone have a good night. Take care.
Thanks. You too now. Alrighty. So for a minute there, I was trying to look up the definition of uh substantial completion phrase that we were talking about before. I didn't find anything very helpful. I found some things, but I it felt like.
You might be thinking of, or George may have been thinking, and maybe there is a one in statute, but the shoreline zoning ordinance has a substantial start uh definition uh which is thirty percent of the project.
Yeah. Well, you know, I was thinking about it later a little bit, and I was thinking, geez, maybe that's one of the state regulatory programs. Not this, but.
Yeah. So I didn't get very far, but I was looking because I wanted to come back to it because
Yeah.
I I kind of wondered the same thing, Craig, like, like, what mean? Can can our CEO or an applicant understand what it means? So because eventually there might be a co- you know, a conversation at some point, so. Anyway, I was thinking about it. Uh, so not to waste time, are we on to minutes? Is that correct? I think so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, um. Okay, and thank you, Julie, if you are still hearing us uh for all of the work on the minutes. Let's take a few minutes. So Sarah, what we would do at this time is often take a few minutes to to go through the the minutes that have been presented. And if there are suggested edits, we would make those recommendations and then try to be thorough and and uh either approve or deny them, whatever.
Yeah.
Usually approve after we've amended them.
That's usually. All right.
Boy, they had to cover a lot. Holy cow.
So the minutes are in uh in a drive within the town website or something like that?
Uh, it would be something like that. And in the email that Anthony sent out, uh, it was tonight, I believe. There was a the Zoom meeting, but there was also a link to uh an application or tonight's packet of information.
Okay.
Among the things that are all in one long document that's a hundred and eighty-three pages, at the end of it are the minutes.
I got it. I I somehow, I, there was so much communication uh from the neighbors and so on, that that little link I skipped on it.
Right. It probably seemed kind of minor, right? After.
Yeah, I did then.
Okay. Alrighty, um. See. Craig's looking over the minutes.
No, I'm all good.
You're all good? Okay. For the planning board members, so Sarah, so you you can't vote on on adopting these minutes because you weren't part of the planning board at that time. For the other planning board members who are here, are we okay to proceed with any edits or recommendations or anything? Yeah. Um, any edits that we want to put in there? Anybody have anything? I I I don't have any edits. I just, I just noticed that on numerous occasions, I saw um reference to typos that were fixed when I was reading through. So there was reference to what was captured. And then at the end, it says two typos fixed. So um, I'm not sure what that means exactly. I don't know if that was just a note for Julie. I was just curious. Anybody know?
Well, so a number of them were uh things that I said at the meeting regarding um errors that um needed to be fixed in the findings.
Got it. So it was referencing that part?
Yeah, like for example, I had originally written the findings for the design of the uh reinforced turf with two inches of top soil, when in fact it was designed with four.
Gotcha. Okay, all right. Um.
I have a few minor suggested changes. Um. The um in um the first paragraph, big A, uh, third line down, uh, at the end of the sentence, um. I I says operate store restoration shop. I would add the word boat, operate boat restoration shop, just to be clear.
Okay.
It's um.
Do you mind if we just check with Julie? Because I I can see the plan where um Julie, who helps who helps keep us all straight, are you able to capture these?
Yes, I'm writing it down as you say it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Then at the very end of that same paragraph, uh voting on findings of facts draft, um, I would add to that provided by the town attorney.
So it would read voting on findings of facts draft provided by the town's attorney?
Correct. Um, and then lastly, um, on the second page, uh, towards the bottom paragraph, little K. Um, disposal of solid waste uh will not exceed with conditions. I don't believe there were any conditions regarding solid waste.
Hmm, that's a good point. Um. And by.
So it's a part that we talked, part of it was the discussion of the waste dump that taken to the.
Yeah, it got pretty convoluted.
Yeah, but you're right. In the end, I'm not sure we had any condition. We decided that you know, the town's policies are the town's policies and uh we didn't have control over everything.
Right, right.
What I had for notes was will not exceed cap, I wrote cap, I don't know what that means, of transfer station.
Oh, probably the capacity.
Capacity, yeah, you probably.
Right.
There you go. But we we never put that into a actual special condition.
I think we just decided that.
Motion. It said motion will not exceed capacity of transfer station, seconded, all in favor, five to zero.
Oh, maybe I'm misreading the minutes then. Maybe that's.
Maybe I mixed it up. It it was hard minutes.
So, yeah, i- it's not a condition, so um
Okay.
I think that was just part of the discussion. So I I think you can just eliminate the words with conditions.
Perfect.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Um, does anybody else have any any edits or suggestions, Craig?
No.
No, me either.
Rich?
No.
Nor nor do I. I don't have any. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion to um accept the minutes as uh amended.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the what meeting is it?
It is uh April first, two thousand twenty.
Maybe as amended.
Thank you. Seconded?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call vote. So all all those in favor, George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor. So that's four in favor, none opposed. And 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 then so Sarah, so next time when we vote, you'd you'd be obviously able to be voting there because you've been present for the discussion. So the only reason why I didn't say abstained, because I don't think that it's even applicable in this case for you, right? So. Just wanted to make sure I talked to you about it.
Thanks.
Okay, before we go for, it's been another lengthy night, not as lengthy as as some others, but.
No, this is a short night for.
At least an hour shorter than.
I'm gonna have to have two lunches that day now.
Yeah, that's great. So um a- any updates that that uh we need to know about Gary? Are you there?
Um, no, nothing really new that you don't already know about, I don't think.
Okay.
Can I ask Gary a question?
Sure.
Um, I noticed what we have on the uh the backup log of applications, uh JM Motors, but I also note that they've got this big sign out front and a few cars. Are they, do you know if they're actively operating at this point?
They are not. Though I I think those, the former owner has been cleaning that garage out, and I'm pretty sure those cars belong to him.
Uh huh.
Because they don't, neither one of them look like they're worthy of being placed out there for display.
I was kind of surprised to see a sign out there.
Yeah, I don't know why he put his sign up already, but he knows he's going to go to planning board. I have his application.
Yeah, okay.
So another question, Gary.
Yeah.
Pete Gagnon, they just sold Gagnon's. Is that still going to be coming in front of us or?
I think it is. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, Anthony talked to Pete Gagnon. Um, I didn't. We needed a little more information, and I got a hold of Coffin Engineering, and he was supposed to provide that, but it's been upwards to a month before he has. So I'm not sure where that's at. I'll check with Anthony.
So so.
Greg, did you say they sold Gagnon?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good intel. I didn't know that.
Did they sell them all, Craig?
I think it was, I think she only had two left, right? And uh, so it was two stores that were bought. Belgrade, Belgrade, Noben, I think.
Oh, I thought they still had a dozen.
Well, maybe, but I think I don't know. I thought there was two left and and Belgrade and Auburn, but I may be getting misinformation as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Wow, crazy. Um, and I wanted to thank the uh planning board members who were able to conduct the special planning board meeting, right? That was on Tuesday, the thirteenth. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Sarah can vote on those minutes, too.
Yeah.
So so thank you for doing that. That will help move things along. Uh, so that was George, right? Rich and Sarah. Those, so thank you so much.
Yeah, and we're we're going to do that again this Tuesday at one o'clock.
It was so much fun the first time.
I know, couldn't wait to do it again.
Well.
Have we got the agenda?
Hopefully, hopefully this one will be about as short as as long as the other one.
We'll get you the agenda, Craig. If you don't have it, we'll get you, get it to you.
Well, if it was sent out, I probably have it.
I think it was.
Well, I know I received it. What I don't know off the top of my head is, I assume everybody received it at the same time.
Yeah, I would believe so.
Have to ask Sheila.
Is this the announcement of the uh upcoming meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know I got mine.
So they're not.
Craig probably did too.
There are three shoreline zoning applications on it.
So thank you for doing that one in advance on this coming Tuesday. And Tuesday night, I'm going to go to attend a select board meeting. It's on Tuesday night.
Oh, I I'd rather have a planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I would too. It's just I'm booked, I'm booked.
And though deep in, so with you on that meeting too.
Okay.
Because uh the superintendent is going to present uh
Oh, right.
Budget.
Right.
Okay.
Sarah, among all the information that Anthony's provided you, did he um make you aware of the uh planning board training uh that each of us had to go through that through Maine Municipal Association? Has he done that yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I I don't know what their schedule is, but you might want to ask about that. The town will pay for you to attend one of those training seminars on, we're all we all all did it and it's it's worthwhile. It um inter it it focuses a lot on process and and you you remind me of it actually uh when we were talking earlier about um when you can vote on minutes and when you can't and those kind of procedural issues.
Are they doing that uh in person now, George, or is it?
No, I think it's virtual.
Yeah, yeah.
I know Becky won't be teaching it, though.
Yeah.
She used to. Pretty weird to have your wife as your own teacher.
Now, now, some spouses might say, when is when is that not the case?
Right.
Well, just just don't ask, Bert, okay?
Yeah.
We're getting into.
By the way, Peter, Bert said to say hi to you.
Thank you. Please give him my best. I appreciate that.
You guys go to school together?
We did. That's just how we met.
No, I meant Bert and and Peter.
No, no, we did not. But I came on the planning board when Bert was still on.
Oh, I see.
Peter went to school with me.
That's correct.
Is that right?
We're that vintage.
What a small world.
I went to school with Bert.
Yeah.
Joe, you did?
Yeah.
You're really?
Yeah, graduated eighty-four with it.
Jake class?
Yeah.
I went to school.
Were you at the class of the Union last year?
No, I didn't make it.
Oh, you're missing a good time.
Oh, funny.
Yeah, Rich and I went to school together, except it was at the University of Maine.
That's right.
Oh, God.
If nothing else, I, I think we call it a night, can't we? Okay.
Do they say that?
Alright, well, I think we're all good for tonight. Uh, Julie, a big thank you for all your help and, uh. Doing our notes and keeping us straight, so I really appreciate that. Thanks, everybody. Um, we're out of here. It's eight fifty-seven. Not bad, not bad at all. Alright, thanks. Have a great night.
Good night all.
See you later.
Yeah.